Thank you all for your patience. I'll now call this meeting back to order. Al's getting set up over there. We will continue on with item A, approval of minutes from previous meetings. Do have a motion for approval and discussion?
So moved.
A second. A motion and a second. Any discussion on the meeting minutes?
Yes. I would just like to have a chance to change what it said that I asked for when I was saying something about President Clark. So I'd like to give that language to Debbie and do it, have it redone later, but that was not that the university came racing in right when something was happening and fixed it. It was a long-term thing that had been there and they finally came over and helped us with it because the town wasn't doing anything about it. And they did not digitize our records. We digitized our records. They put them on there up so you could get them because we didn't have capacity to do that. So just those two things. They may seem like small things, but I wanted it to be historically correct instead of making it seem like something else had happened. And I'd also like to ask if when we're speaking about anyone, if they're president of something, that we call them president. So instead of calling him Mr. Clark all the way through, I'd like him to be called President Clark. He's president of a major university and I think he deserves that respect in our minutes. So those are the things that I would ask for.
Did you want to make a motion for an amendment?
Could I make a motion? Yes. Could I make a motion to amend that? And I will give the actual language to Debbie later.
So I'll second that.
I think she has to give what she's amending tonight. She can't give it to me later, right?
Yeah, you have to, we have to vote on it.
Okay. You want me to read? I wrote out what it is so I can read it.
We can put these on the next one and she can send it to me and I can...
So we could motion to take this at the next meeting?
At the next meeting.
You can make a motion to continue the approval of these minutes until the next meeting and then-
Get the right language.
At that time, you can read into the record the exact language that you'd like to see that would correct the record. But any changes to the record should be verbatim what was said in the meeting itself, right? So you probably want to double check that as well. I mean, making edits to minutes is unorthodox in that minutes are kept simultaneously with the ongoing events. So it is very important, in my opinion, if you're going to make edits to minutes, that they very accurately reflect what was actually said. So-
Very clear about what I said at the meeting and that is not what's in the minutes.
Yeah. So it may be good too to just check it and have it written out verbatim. That way the motion to amend could be the exact quotes. And then I think it would probably fall more appropriately in line with what the minutes are. So you could, if the board wants, you could continue the approval of these minutes and you can double check and write down literally verbatim what you said and that can be read into the record.
Sure.
Okay. Do we have a motion to continue?
So moved.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next up, we have announcements from the President. I'd just like to read something that I prepared for everybody. Residents of Bridgewater, last week, we marked September 11th, a day of terror and loss, a day close to my heart because those close to me lost parents and loved ones when those towers fell. In the days and years that followed that fateful day, many of Bridgewater's citizens answered the call to war with their very own Kevin Preach paying the ultimate sacrifice. And just one day before, another life was stolen, Charlie Kirk, a Christian, a husband, a father, some agreed with him and many others did not, but he lived by conviction, unashamed of his faith, unafraid to speak what he believed, and willing to reach across divides. Tonight, we proclaim Bridgewater a city of peace, but let's speak plainly, peace is under siege. School shootings, political assassinations, a nation where too often people are attacked not for what they do, but for what they believe. Violence is no stranger, it walks among us. At every meeting, we honor patriots who fought and bled for freedom. They secured our rights, rights that come not from government, but from God. Chief among them is the right to speak freely. Let me be clear, free speech carries responsibility. Words matter. When we hurl names such as racist, leftist, fascist, and Nazi, we strip away humanity. And when humanity is stripped away, violence follows, always. Tonight, we also honor Ms. Emily Stone, 103 years old. She has seen real tyranny of the likes of Hitler, Mussolini, and Imperial Japan. Once our enemies came from across the sea, today we risk raising new enemies from within. Not with armies, but with hatred, division, and careless words that pit neighbor against neighbor and poison the minds of our children. If Bridgewater is to be a city of peace, then peace cannot be passive. It must be built with courage, with discipline, with faith, and with resolve. See your neighbor not as a label, but as a person. Judge them by their actions, by their values, and by the life that they lead. That is how we honor the fallen. That is how we honor residents such as Ms. Stone. That is how we honor America itself. Peace is not given, it is built. And in Bridgewater, we will continue to build peace with courage, with faith, and with the unbreakable resolve that has always made America worth defending. Thank you.
Amen.
Thank you. On that note, next we'll move on to proclamations honoring Emily Stone on the occasion of her 103rd birthday. And I'll read that into the record. Whereas Emily Stone, a cherished and former longstanding member of the Bridgewater community, will joyfully celebrate her 103rd birthday on September 24th, 2025. And whereas reaching the age of 103 is an extraordinary milestone, reflecting a life enriched by decades of experiences, meaningful contributions, and the deep affection and respect of family, friends, and neighbors. And whereas Ms. Stone's longevity and enduring spirit remain a source of inspiration and pride to all who know her. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Town Council of Bridgewater, on behalf of its residents, extends its warmest congratulations and heartfelt best wishes to Ms. Emily Stone on the occasion of her 103rd birthday and proudly honors her as a beloved and remarkable member of our community. In witness whereof, this proclamation is presented with great admiration and celebration on this day in recognition of a life well-lived and a legacy that continues to enrich the spirit of Bridgewater. Ms. Stone is not tonight, but we will make sure to present that to her. Next is a City of Peace proclamation. Counselor, Dr. Perry, Counselor Perry sponsored this, and I'll ask him to read this proclamation to the record.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we have City of Peace proclamation. Whereas the World Health Organization defines health as not merely being the absence of disease or infirmity, but achievement of a balance of physical, mental, and social well-being. And whereas peace is not merely the absence of war and violence, but a condition where society has achieved a balance of prosperity, security, justice, and hope. And whereas peace is necessary for everyone to achieve health as defined by the World Health Organization. And whereas the citizens of Bridgewater want to work together to create and implement initiatives that not only foster peace, but create a positive lasting change in our community and around the world and become a model for other cities. This vision for our future should build on the expertise of each person and involve all segments of our city in planning actions and making a difference. To this, we are committed. Whereas the concerned citizens and community leaders of Bridgewater are committed to establishing peace in the town and beyond in order to promote understanding, economic opportunity, and improve the quality of life in our town. And whereas the United Nations has designated the 21st of September of each year to be the International Day of Peace, devoted to commemorating and strengthening the ideals of peace both within and among all nations and peoples. Therefore be it resolved that the Bridgewater Town Council proclaim the town of Bridgewater, Massachusetts, USA, a city of peace in perpetuity. And be it further resolved that the Bridgewater Town Council designate the 21st of September of each year to be the Town and Bridgewater International Day of Peace in perpetuity. And be it further resolved that the Bridgewater Town Council, community leaders, and concerned citizens develop policies and procedures that promote establishing peace in our town in perpetuity. In witness whereof, I am here on to set my hand and cause the seal of the Town of Bridgewater to be affixed this 16th day of September, 2025.
Thank you, Dr. Perry. Okay, we will now move on to citizen open forum. Due to Massachusetts' open meeting law requirements, discussions will not take place during public comment periods. If appropriate responses to questions and concerns will be given by the town manager at a future town council meeting. Anyone may comment at this time for up to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Francis Jeffries, 35 Shaw Road. Good evening, councilors, Bridgewater citizens, and guests. After crisscrossing the United States and other parts of the world and living in 19 different communities, I moved to Bridgewater in 1997. I was introduced to Bridgewater through conversations, recurring names and themes, problem-solving discussions, and stories inside the alternate town hall, my sister and I. I learned about the town's foundation and dreams for the future. It's my great honor to stand here as a citizen of Bridgewater and to hear the President's remarks as we mark another significant milestone in the history of our community and reaffirm the core values that unite us all: compassion, understanding, and a steadfast commitment to peace and security. The International City of Peace Initiative is a worldwide movement that recognizes and supports communities committed to fostering a culture of peace at the local level. In 2021, Bridgewater joined this network of 458 cities in 76 countries. Our town is formally acknowledged for its unique achievements in building a strong community. Each year, the Bridgewater International City of Peace Partner Organizations, listed on a program which you'll receive later, offer a variety of programs through peace in Bridgewater and beyond, now in its fifth year. This proclamation is more than a ceremonial gesture. It is a promise to support the well-being of every individual, old-timers, born and raised, and newcomers. It is a pledge to show our families, friends, and neighbors how to nurture, sustain, and build a community based on empathy and cooperation, and to set an example for others who follow us. Let us take pride in this recognition, but let us also embrace the responsibility it brings. May the spirit of peace guide our decisions and inspire our actions today and in the years to come. Thank you.
Good evening, Janet Hanson, Pleasant Street. Just quickly, I just want to say that I'm in favor of ordinance DFY26-005 for the Senior Village Housing Development Zoning Ordinance Amendment. We need to close the loophole, and I hope you support that. I'm also in favor of the staffing study. The cost is, I was just curious as where the money's coming to pay for it, but I think we do need to look at everything to see, make sure that we have what we need, and eliminate what we don't need. Not to put anybody out of a job, but we do need to do that if it hasn't been done in a while. So I'm in favor of that. The Bridgewater State University gift, while it's generous, $55,000, I, you know, you kind of wonder, not to sound greedy, but it seems like they could have done a little bit better, especially with everything that the college does cost us in some ways. But with Governor Healy declaring the spot on Haynes Street as being a development now, you know, I wonder, is the state going to pay, not the university, but is the state going to help the town with water usage, traffic, and schools? You know, she doesn't live here, we do, and the state's eager to just pile development into our town. So I hope somebody's looking at that and negotiating with the town on that. I know it'll be difficult. And the other thing I have is, how many alcohol package stores do we need in town? I may be, you know, people not liking me for saying this, but if we have seven already, they're looking for an eighth. Three or four of them are downtown already. So how many do we need? I just question, why do we have to keep putting more and more package stores in town? So I mean, people will do what they want to do, but is it really necessary to have another one in the center of town? That doesn't even include Cumberland Farms. It doesn't include, I don't think it includes Bridgemont, but there are other things that sell liquor within their establishment, and I don't think that qualifies in this seven that's counted. So I'd just like to hear what you say and who it is. It doesn't say in the order who it is. It would be nice to know what company name, owner's name, is looking for another license. So that's all I have to say for now. Thank you.
I'm not complaining tonight. Lisa Bazell-Curley, 91 Atkinson Drive. I'm waiting for Al to come out. Is he hiding? He's supposed to be with me. I wanted to thank Merrill Lee and the BIA for doing the white winter lights the last few years. And from what I gather, they're looking for other people to take over that particular project. And Jeff, Al, and I have decided that we would be very happy to assist with that. And we just wanted to make sure that you all knew, we had a meeting with our town manager the other day. Oh, I forgot to say, thanks for everything you guys do. I always mean to say that. But anyways, back to my point. We just want you guys to know, so if anybody's questioning you, has any questions, they can be, they can get ahold of us. And we've already found a company. We did put it out to several. One company is Bridgewater-owned. Well, it's co-owned. The other owner lives in Middleborough, one lives in Bridgewater. We haven't definitely decided on them yet, but they're pretty close to who we're going to go with. And the budget is much better. We're looking at, I think the budget in the past has been about $30,000. We have it down to about $20,000. And after thirty, three, whoops, three years, three years, we'll own the equipment, and then the budget will come down a little bit more as well. So we're not asking the town for money. Anybody listening, please know, it is not town-funded. Again, it's going to be something similar to the Fourth of July and many other projects that we've done. It will be, it'll either happen or it won't happen based on the community's wants and desires. But I think the majority, I've not yet heard one person say that when they drive around the common during the winter months, that it looks ugly. It looks phenomenal. And I think that most of us want to keep that going. It's kind of a, when in the dachtry days, it's kind of a pick-me-up. It's a nice way. We'd actually like to see it extended and go on a little bit longer. There's still details to be worked out, but we just want to make sure that you all were aware of our intent. Anything else?
I mean, I think it's important that we keep this tradition going. I think everybody that drives through the center of towns, whether it's the flags that they see everywhere, and now the lights coming into the season, it would be a shame to see that go away. And, you know, I have a hard time saying no when it comes to things like that, so I might as well jump on in there and try and make sure that that keeps going so that everybody can enjoy it.
Thanks.
Great. Thank you. I'm excited to see that continue. So thank you, guys.
Thanks, Lisa.
Anyone else like to come up and speak?
MJ Spigot, Five Lakes Shore Center, Unit 1128. Mr. President, members of the council, residents and attendants, good evening. I do have a couple of comments this evening, Mr. President. First and foremost, the item that I saw on the agenda was the organizational study. I will say that I believe this is a good idea for the town, to be a community that needs to be responsive and proactive. Now in the first quarter century of the 21st century, we need to modernize and become more agile in our approach. If anything, to rebuild trust and fortify the public's desire for good governance in this time. We need to be a lot more social, but we also need to be more responsible in how we approach our structure of government. Yes, we have a charter. We have operated under that for almost 14 years, but there are changes that need to be made, some refinements, some efficiencies. So I, as a taxpayer and a resident of this town, and a lifelong resident of 42 years as of last Thursday, I think it's a great idea and I wholeheartedly support it, not just as a taxpayer, but also as a member of this town government, as a volunteer. It is something that is desperately needed in these times, and I think that with the administrative team that we have right now, it will be something that will be fully implemented going forward. So for that, Mr. President, I do hope that you will strongly encourage and have an active discussion on it. My other item, I wasn't going to talk about this evening, but I wanted to say I appreciate your comments made earlier this evening. I do want to point out that in order for us to be a unified community, both at the local and at the national level, we must embrace all communities that are marginalized, that do not have the loudest voices. While there are those that we know voices are uplifted in various ways and manners, we must continue to remember those who do not have the voice. I am a person who is a part of a community that is considered sometimes the voiceless. And I would ask that you vigorously defend and embrace those communities when you embrace those that have other voices that are maybe more popular, or more louder, or more, shall we say, bombastic. I don't see myself as a bombast. I don't see myself as an iconoclast. I see myself as a member of a Bridgewater community, as a person who's lived here for 42 years, who hopes to, hopes to, on high from divine providence, to stay here until the day she expires. I can tell you right now, I have never felt more welcomed in this community than I have in the last few years. And I can tell you right now, Mr. President, that makes all the difference. So with that, members of the council, residents and attendants, if we are to be a community of peace, if we are to be the community of ideals and high values that we strive to seek and improve upon, let us speak for those that don't have a voice and speak out for those that may be hurt by some forms of speech in our community and elsewhere. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come up and speak? Okay, thank you very much. Moving on, we do not have any appointments, hearings, licensed transactions, or presentations this evening. We will now move on to town manager's report.
First update, fire station update, and Bob will present that.
Good evening. I hope the Christmas lights are on by the time I leave. Again, I've given you the monthly report. We continue to zero in on completion. We're working on delivery schedules now that are beginning in November. So we're still shooting for the fire department to transition over sometime in December. We're turning on equipment, we're moving technology in, there's a lot of moving pieces happening right now, but it's all good. Right now, I would tentatively say that in terms of a ribbon cutting, we're probably looking at the end of January to February, just to make sure that the fire department is in there, things are running the way they're supposed to, and we can do that without any glitches. As I said at the last meeting, it's pretty impressive as to where the building is right now. We're at about 85% completion. So if anyone wants to do a tour of the station, coordinate that through Debbie, who will coordinate it through me, and then we can make that, that happen. The owners' project managers are aware that there might be increasing interest from council members now that we're near the end to do tours, and they're available to do that with you. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those as it relates to the fire station.
Any questions?
Here.
Oh, you, sir. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Rully. I noticed the finance log was absent in this agenda.
So you had the budget. What you didn't have was the owner's chain, the change log. The good news is, we haven't had any this month. So I thought about, do I put it in there and then cause confusion or celebrate the fact that we haven't had any this month, which is the first time since the project started? So that's a good sign.
Yes.
So that's why it wasn't in.
Okay, thank you. That's good enough for me.
All right. Any, any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
But there's more.
Oh.
I think, so the town manager asked me to address where we were with respect to affordable housing. That was a question that had come up. As many of you know, if we are below 10% deed-restricted affordable units underneath the Commonwealth's program for 40Bs, which is their Affordable Housing Initiative, we have to accept those projects. We are above 10%. We are currently at 10.85%. We anticipate staying there. There are some projects that have not been folded into that calculation. Jasmine Way, as an example, has been dormant for almost 12 years. That project has now been sold through a foreclosure. A new developer is actively redeveloping that site. They'll be before the ZBA next week for a modification, not to reduce the number of units, just some of the configuration. We are also adding on Murphy's Landing, which has some for sale units. And Ducksboro is continuing to build out, you know, the next phase of there. So we're comfortable, we're going to stay above the 10%. The Perkins Foundry project, if that is to go forward, had made a commitment to give us 10% of their units as affordable. They weren't required to do that. They did that in exchange for a reduction in the amount of commercial space. I'll talk about 106 Haynes Street in a minute. In the governor's RFQ, there is a requirement for affordability, which they're entitled to do. They can put whatever deed restriction they want, but that's at 80% of area meeting income. So we're comfortable that we're going to stay above the 10%. There are things we can do through zoning and other initiatives if it looks like we were ever going to fall below, but I don't think we're, in the next two or three years, we're close to that.
Any questions on that, councilors?
Are you going to give the update on 106 separately?
Yep.
I just had a question with the affordable housing and how that plays into this 106 Haynes Street. Does that housing go towards that 10% or?
Yeah, so that, I mean, that would, are we done with the affordable?
I have a general affordable question. Can you speak to how many units 0.85% is?
Similar question. Sure. So currently, we have 1,011 units that are 40B units, deed-restricted 40Bs. So again, that does not include Murphy's Landing and the expansion at Ducksboro or Jasmine Way, so that number will eventually go up, but those units aren't online yet.
Okay. So it'd be around 80 to 90 units above the threshold?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, exactly. Same question.
Any, any general questions about the affordable housing? Any, any general questions about the affordable housing requirement before we move on to Hale Street? Okay.
Actually, I do have a question. The Form B zoning, which we had voted on, which we had tried for four stories and it ended up at five stories, is that applicable to this situation? And will it be applicable to Hale Street?
So I think with respect to our affordable units, that it's the Form B code. I mean, that doesn't have any bearing on this. I mean, that, the five stories is limited to the rear portion of Campus Plaza. The rest of the Form B code, if a developer wanted to follow those rules, would be applicable. But there's no requirement that a developer has to follow the Form B code. I mean, we want to be clear about that. But the five stories would not be applicable at 106 Hale Street, if that's what your question is. I mean, the requirement for having five stories is, I believe, you have to have over 140,000 square feet. And this site is just under two acres, so it's not even 80,000 square feet.
Do you anticipate how tall the building might be?
Well, it's limited right now by what our zoning. It can't be more than four stories.
So I guess we could go to the Hale Street update, then.
Yep. So, I mean, we've known about the Hale Street property for the last year. And my office has been in constant conversations with Bridgewater State and DCAM, who is the real estate arm of the Commonwealth, with respect to what happens at that site. We've expressed our concerns with respect to, we have challenges with respect to water and sewer capacity. I believe, Mr. Loretta, you received an email from DCAM similar to what I did, where DCAM has acknowledged that water and sewer is an issue, and that they are providing a letter to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities for the town to be able to get some preference with infrastructure money that we might apply for. So that's a positive. You know, clearly, my office has been very outspoken in fact that, and I've shared this with, with DCAM and the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Community, we can't in good conscience say that, without having some clear path forward in terms of how we're addressing water and sewer, that we can just embrace unlimited new development. You know, the fact that there was water and sewer to this site 40 years ago, we don't have a reservation policy to connect. So it is something that they're aware of, and we think, you know, the town manager and I have had many conversations about this. We think this is advantageous to us in terms of leveraging the state, that, I'll be outspoken for a minute. I mean, the governor's made this a priority of her agenda. So, I mean, if this is going to work for her, it's got to work for us. I mean, that's just my position on it, on behalf of the town, until somebody tells me otherwise.
Thank you. Questions?
I don't know the accuracy of this, so I thought I'd ask. Is there any concerns of that site has material on it?
Yeah, I, we hear that a lot, and, I mean, that's a lot of tall tales. So the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, or, I mean, you've heard this on the Spring Street Light, the Metropolitan Bay Transit Authority, they don't buy dirty land. So the Hale Street site has been remediated. This has come up several times. BSU can provide, we don't own the land, so, but those sites have been completely remediated, regardless of what people in the community think. If you went onto DEP's website, none of these properties are listed as dirty sites. So they're clean. That's not to say they weren't dirty at one point, but they've been remediated.
Sure. It's just, like you said, it's a common thing that's come up. I've heard that a few times. And getting a clear answer on it from the citizens and the documentation and things like that, so I just wanted to clarify that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I have another question, and that is, again, is this going to be applied with the 15 units per acre criteria at Hale Street?
Well, I mean, and I don't want to, well, the 15 units per acre is a minimum required. Under the Form B code, and we're asked to look at the compliance model, under the Form B code, technically, somebody could build 41 units per acre. So it's going to be more than 15 units per acre, I can tell you that. What that exact number is, I don't know, because I don't, they could do townhouses, they could do ones in two bedrooms, they could do studios. So we don't know that yet. But they are required to follow, if they go under the Form B code, this is in the Flex frontage district. If you look at the zoning ordinance, there are dimensional requirements that any developer has to follow. So it limits the height, limits the setbacks, talks about materials. So there are additional controls, but it will be more than, most likely, more than 15 units per acre, which is by right under our current zoning. And that has nothing to do with the MBTA community's language. That's under the Form B code.
Just so I can clarify, a moment ago, talking about a different property, you said there is no requirement for the developer to follow the Form B code? So...
That's an option that a developer has. I mean, you know, they could look at and say, this is too restrictive. The motivation for a Form B code is, it's an expedited approval process for a developer, so we have the checklist. The developer files that checklist, you know, they can get through the approval process in less than a year than several years. But if they chose that, you know, that's not something I want to do, they can go the old-fashioned way and apply for a site plan or a special permit, whatever's required, and go through the approval process. But our experience is, that's generally two, three, four-year process. So there's really no incentive for a developer to do that, but they have that right.
Okay. Does the, we, we've discussed the MBTA zoning and where we currently are on it. If there is no cap on that, what is the current cap for at least the, for the zoning in that area?
Well, 1,401 units is what is required. So there's no cap. I mean, 1,400 is what's required under the MBTA legislation. We don't have a cap in terms of, again, it's going to be dictated by what the underlying zoning is. We have dimensional requirements. Let's say that a building has to be this far setback, the frontage has to be this. That's going to limit, somebody saying they have unlimited ability to develop, plus the height restrictions, meeting the parking requirements, having a component of commercial or retail. So there are more controls in place than I think that many people are aware of through the zoning that are going to limit the fact that you're not going to have a 10-story building with 100 units.
Okay.
Could you just speak to the commercial requirement, this being in the central business district? Nothing would change without, I'm assuming?
No. So, I mean, in the Broad Street property, as an example, is in what we call the mixed-use development. So that has a higher requirement for a minimum amount of commercial space. As we get to the Flex district where Hale Street is, there still is a requirement to have commercial or retail space. Transitional is the third frontage area we have, which is really kind of leaking more into residential neighborhoods. So we significantly reduce the commercial requirement there, because we want to see more, more housing. But there needs to be a commercial component in that building.
Mr. Rully, I wonder if you could clarify me if I read right. So the House Street is owned by the state?
So the property currently is an asset of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. They have an RFP out for developers as of Friday to see what interest there is to develop that. If they chose a developer and it was to move forward, the Commonwealth would be transferring the title and fee simple to that developer. So currently, we get nothing or little tax revenue from that parcel. Once it's conveyed to a private entity, then it's fully on our tax rolls again.
So the other question I have, so if I read correctly, the governor is paying BSU money for that land?
No, I think what the statement that was made is that the proceeds from the sale, private party paying the state for whatever the consideration is to acquire that property, a portion or all of those proceeds are going to be redirected to the university for capital improvements. We have no control of that. We don't own the land. So, I mean, that's the governor's decision. And I think, you know, quite honestly, the Bridgewater State Foundation had a sign-off on making that land available. And I'm certain that that was, you know, one of the talking points, is can we get that money reinvested back into the university so it's not impacting taxpayers?
All right, thank you.
Any further questions?
Yep, I just got one more. Obviously, water and sewer are a huge concern in town. Is there anything that we could do proactively before that transfer takes place, or a developer comes in to ensure that we pull more money in for sewer water, roads, anything?
I don't know that I, I mean, I appreciate where you're going with that. I mean, I think that, you know, that's what we're doing now. We're trying to leverage our position. Do we have the right to, you know, have a prohibition on a transfer until something happens? We don't, I mean, that would be a decision you all would have to make under Jason's guidance. But, you know, again, this goes back to the MBTA situation. If you're going to put a moratorium on something, then we're not going to get money. So, I mean, but I, I'm comfortable, based on the representations that President Loretta got in his email and what I received, that the door is open a lot more than it ever was before for us to have a conversation and impress upon the state that we need some assistance. And I won't speak to it, the manager can at a future meeting, but we are looking at alternatives. We have been looking at alternatives for water and sewer. These things don't happen quickly, but we're continuing to look at them. And I think I can say that we're making progress. But not to debate here tonight, but we're, I mean, none of this happens without water and sewer. We know that.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Yes. What water plans have you been considering for Bridgewater?
I'm going to defer to the manager when he's prepared to speak to that.
All right.
Which I doubt is tonight.
Thank you. Do you have anything else, Mr. Rully?
I don't think so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Mr. President, I just want to add one piece to what Bob said, and I think it's just critical that people hear this. You know, you know, we heard this in the previous meeting. I know it was a question here emerged that, a public comment. The town is looking at this as an opportunity to leverage this. I've had a meeting with the Secretary of Executive Office of Livable Communities, Bob in the CED Department has conversations with him. The council's reached out. We had a letter from the council, a letter from us, a letter from the planning board. And what we've done is, we've made sure, for example, DCAM in particular, when they responded to us, specifically mentioned that the one-stop shop, Growth for Growth Grant Portal that we've talked about, they're going to authorize a letter, authorizing us to submit an application in support of our request for grant funds. They've made a commitment that we've raised traffic and safety concerns, and they want the developer to work with the town to mitigate those issues as well. So we're looking at opportunities to leverage this. We can't do this without the water and the wastewater. We've been very clear about that. We're not just sitting here just hoping that, you know, allow the development to happen and address the issues after. We're trying to be proactive and address those issues. So I just want to emphasize that for the community and for the council. We're actively working on that. Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
All right. The next item is municipal energy aggregation update. So hopefully, a bit of good news. And before I get there, I do know we have our consultant, who did this work in terms of municipal aggregation here with us, Denise Saller, Mark Capodanno from Colonial Power Group. I know this matter hasn't been before the council, I think, for over a year. And so I'm just going to give a quick synopsis of what municipal aggregation is. I'm not going to spend too much time there. But essentially, municipal aggregation allows the town to utilize the collective purchasing power of our residents and businesses in town to hopefully go out to the market and get a supply rate that hopefully is lower than the supply rate that National Grid provides. In the packet, it gives you a timeline of where we've been in terms of this process, and it also gives you some preliminary pricing. I've spoken with our energy committee. We might be in a suitable time for us to look at implementing a municipal aggregation program. So I'm letting the community know. I'm letting the council know. We're going to go to the market. I've got indicative pricing, and that's what that sheet you see there in the packet is. That's not actionable pricing. That gives us information about what the climate looks like. And if you look in the packet, for example, on a three-year term, 35 months, you're looking at a 13.917 rate. In comparison to where National Grid is at this moment, it's 15.44. So the opportunity to realize savings for residents in town and have a lower cost for their electric bills, we're excited about that, and we're going to explore it. Once again, we're going to go to the market and get that pricing. If it's not where we want to be, I won't act on it. But if it is where I want it to be, I will act on it. And then if we do that by the September time, we could roll out this program by December. One other important note to, 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 to keep in mind is that the town is also looking at, and we think it's prudent, having another service where it's an added mill, and when I say mills, 0.001 on that supply rate, that'll allow us to fund sustainability matters. So a sustainability manager, help us to manage this program, help us to manage green communities and different things like that. So that would still be below what National Grid's rate is if that pricing was around there. So we think it's prudent. It helps us add more bandwidth to staff with minimal cost to residents. Another key thing to keep in mind, this is an opt-out program generally. Residents are opted into a program. If they're not interested in pursuing this program for a variety of reasons, they must opt out. And with that, I do have Denise and Mark here, if you want to hear from them any further. But I think it's a potentially exciting time to pursue this program.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilors, do you have any, any questions?
I'd like to see it as a presentation at a future council meeting, so we can have more information, more time to do it. I mean, I don't have questions at this point, but it sounds very attractive, and I think it's prudent that we're going down this path.
Just to add to that, if the town, if I determine that we're going to act on the pricing that we receive in about a week, there is a robust community engagement program that we would do, that provides a lot more information about the program, opt-out processes, a variety of things. Denise and Mark will work with our staff, and they will lead those, those community outreach things. There wouldn't be an, I want to be very clear, because of where we are in the process, there has been significant work. They've come to the council before. There won't be a meeting in before we, before I determine whether to execute pricing or not. But if we do execute pricing, we will make sure we have a robust community engagement program. I've talked at length with Denise and Mark about that, and we will definitely provide a presentation for the council as well.
Councilor Murphy?
Just to follow up on your wording there, you said, "before I determine." Is that something that the town manager signs off on to refer to council? Not, not the town council?
Correct.
Any other questions from councilors? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Next update is regarding the town website. Real briefly here, one, we want to thank our residents who replied to the survey that we put online. We had over, about 100 responses. Where we're at in terms of that process is, we are in the discovery and design phase of our website. So we're looking at site mapping and migration of our current website. So we anticipate we'll have a new website by December, most likely. So IT department is working with our departments. They're implementing the feedback that we received to really make this website more service-oriented. As we get closer, we'll have a more robust rollout of the website, but I want to keep the council and the community informed. We've heard your input. We're utilizing and designing our website. So wanted to highlight that, potentially December launch frame for that. In addition to the transition from the website, we are also transitioning from a mass.org domain to a mass.gov domain. I know there's generally been some question there. We haven't talked too much about it. Why are we doing it? Largely, one, the transition to a .gov domain provides a little bit more protection and understanding for the community that you're actually on an approved government platform. To get a .gov domain, you have to get approval from the federal government. So we've done that process. So it's saving us, hopefully, adding protections against phishing and spoofing, right? Another thing is, in, for additional cybersecurity grant funds, the state is looking for more communities to, to transfer to a .gov website. But the other reason is, there are grants that assist with the migration, and so we're not transitioning the whole website. We're just transitioning the front end of the website. We're not transitioning our emails or anything like that. The full transition, we're going to apply for a grant to help us support that. There'll be no loss. I know the question has been presented to me from some councilors in the community, will we lose data or anything by this transition? No loss in data. Our backend system, talk with our information officer, we won't lose any information with that rollout. So that's what we're doing, and I think that will probably be around the same timeline that we have with the website transition.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And then... And then one other thing in terms of social media, we are going to have a call out for the community, and we'll ask the council help with this. We'll put on our social media. We need more pictures of Bridgewater, beautiful pictures that we can add to our website. We want our residents to send us some, you know, wonderful pictures of the community. So we'll put that on our, our, our social media, but we encourage you guys to help us in beautifying the website as we transition. All right? Thank you.
Mr. Town Manager, if people do have pictures they want to submit, I don't know if you're this far enough in that process, but do you know where they?
We'll put it on our, we'll put it on our website. So I'm, being on our Facebook, it will probably be a direct link to our information technology office, but we'll put it on our website. I'll make sure when we do that, I'll present it to you all.
Thank you.
With the advertisement, yep. Right. Next item is the downtown area update. I know I've had a few of these on for the town manager's report, and we've obviously heard from our community as well. As I mentioned previously, I've worked with our police chief, our fire chief, our DPW team, our CED department. We're looking at opportunities to sort of improve the pedestrian access in the downtown area. You know, there's expenses related to that. For example, I had mentioned before, I was looking at some rapid flashing beacons. Some of these are, you know, $20,000 without the install of these beacons. It is, I want the community to know, I want the council to know, we're looking at doing this work. What my plan is to do is right now is open period to submit a grant for complete streets. We do have some projects that we had in mind to submit already, but I do plan on submitting a grant request for the downtown area. Hopefully, we can use grant money to do this work, and if not, we're still something that we will explore, as something that would come down, come to the council about appropriation order, because I would like to see some movement there. We have a proposal, we've worked with our DPW team on proposals, and like I said, our team has identified areas where we think we can make some tangible difference in the downtown area. So we're actively working on it, but I think the first thing, let's apply for the grant and see if we can get the state to help fund some of that improvement before we come asking for appropriation order. So that's where I'm there on downtown area.
Any questions? Okay.
I just wanted to say, because I've had some conversations with you, I'm sure other councillors are as well, so, and we've had citizens come up. So thank you for trying to address the walkability of the downtown area. That is a concern. The website has also been a big concern, so I didn't want that to go unnoticed. It was a huge complaint, has been a big complaint and a big concern from citizens. So thank you for taking some initiative on those and working through and following up on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions on those, those items? Okay.
All right. And finally, organizational review. In the packet that we have before you, there's a draft scope of an organizational review. I know I've communicated this with the council, but, you know, based on timing, you know, I believe that it is prudent, especially as we enter in this next budget season, that we have another third-party look at our organization. Obviously, I've been here for two months. I have my, my viewpoint looking at the staff, but I think entering into the budget season might be prudent to have that call-in center review. Once again, it's a draft scope, but within that draft scope, you see a price tag of about $30,000 for this work to be done. Based on timing, I wanted the council to know, I, I would like to pursue this, but I haven't presented this as an order request or appropriation of funds, because within the town manager's department, we're going to have to have a transfer of funds already for a variety of reasons. One, the salary line was underfunded in the budget, so we will have to have a transfer. I don't want this to be delayed by having a transfer of funds, because one, whether I find it in our professional services line or utilize funding in HR department, this is work that we need to do, and we need to begin now because of the timeline. If we, if we execute a contract within a couple of weeks, we might be able to get some data by February or March, which would be a perfect time where we are in the budget process. So I really wanted to proceed forward with that, but I didn't want to do that unilaterally. I wanted to let the council know this is something that I really wanted to pursue and see if there was an appetite for us to do that, because like I said, we would do a transfer probably in the middle of the, middle of the year when we do a recap of our, our lines within the manager's budget.
Comments from councillors on the organizational review?
Yeah, this is something that we definitely addressed in the town manager's goals. So I would be in support of this and help, again, with the timing to be ready for the next budget season. I think that information will prove to be helpful. So again, this is what we put in for, and it's his goals, and if funding was available, he wanted to bring in an outside source. So just want to let the council know that we had discussed that as a group when we went over his goals.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm totally for this. I think it's a really good idea, especially where you don't have assistant town manager and, you know, lots going on. How did you pick this company?
Yeah, Collin Center has done a variety of organizational reviews. I've worked with them in the past previously. They have a really good executive team. Like I said, they've worked with a lot of communities. I know they work with some surrounding communities as well, so I knew there would be some familiarity for people within the region with the Collin Center. So that's why I picked them.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes, I also favor this study. I think it's very important. Where do you anticipate being able to secure funds for this in our budget?
Yeah, typical things like this, if, if, you know, depending on what our budget is, we would take them from the one-time unforeseen reserve that we have. That's an area that we could definitely tap. You know, I've talked with Lori and our team, we feel comfortable utilizing that in the future, but once again, I'd like to evaluate the budget. Maybe there's some savings somewhere else, but that's likely where I would ask for the appropriation to come from.
Thank you.
I just wanted to, I agree with this. I think this is great. I think it puts you in a good spot as well as the town manager. One thing I would ask you to consider is in the interview department heads, if there was a way to include chairpersons of the committees that work directly with those department heads? I don't know if that would give you a more, more opinions on, on those and as they go through that process. I know we have some of the, whether it's the zoning board or planning board or any of those, any of, any of the ones that work directly with those. And just from the chair, I know that that may or may not cost more. I hope it wouldn't, even if they were short interviews, but I think it would be something that would be good to consider.
I'm glad you asked that. I did ask about that. Unfortunately, it would cost more, but it also would delay the timeline that they had. When I first approached the Collin Center, and I also approached some other groups that do this work, the timeline was pushing into our, further into our budget season. And I wanted to have the report around the same time that we were considering the budget. I think it's really prudent and important for the community and for the council to have this information around the same time. So I got the largest package I could do with the most involvement, but that is also within the timeline. Like I mentioned before, Collin Center, if we had added more components to it, it would have pushed it beyond the budget season, and some of the other groups that I reached out to, it would be into the next fiscal year that would do the work. So I just didn't feel like that was the right call to make.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I actually think this is a good idea, and I was thinking along the lines of Counselor Kennedy as well, but I don't want to delay it. We've got to allow the town manager to do his job. The, you know, the planning committee has worked with him already, and I think we just need to move it along so we can come up with efficiencies.
Yeah, I agree, and I'm in full support of this as well. I think that it's, it's great work. We all unanimously voted in support of this by proxy, by voting for the town manager goals, so I'm happy to, to see this move forward. Just a minor, minor detail, the final report, it's checked off for February 2026. Would that be by the end of February, beginning of February? What do we anticipate there?
When I spoke with Becca, who was sort of going to be the lead on the project team, we were trying to get early February. I won't want to make a commitment of that part, because we were trying to fit it in a tight time there, but hopefully February. And like I say, if I, sensing from what the council is sort of indicating to me, I'm going to call her tomorrow and just see if we can get it. One, we want to make sure it's a good process, right? So I don't want to just speed through just to say we ticked the block, but want it timely, and I will work with her to try to get it as soon as possible, early February.
Great. Any further comments or questions? Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is that all, sir?
That is it on my end.
All right. Next up, we have discussions. So to put it, okay.
Just for future.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Yeah, future questions for our town manager. Paul, did you want to start?
Yeah, I was just going to start. This is going to be, I don't want to come off on the wrong foot here, but I noticed on the schedule here for the Peace in Bridgewater and Beyond event, that the Bridgewater Public Library is a partner organization. I think this is a great initiative, and what I'm about to say has nothing to do with this initiative, to be clear. But I was curious from the town manager, when town entities sign on to be partners or in support of events or things happening in Bridgewater, is there a process for that? And how do you sort of check off on that process?
I'm not going to answer it now, but I just want to understand where you referenced it. I missed it, sorry, Paul.
This little sheet that we all got passed out here of, it says fifth annual Peace in Bridgewater and Beyond.
Okay.
Down the bottom, Bridgewater Public Library is listed as a partner organization.
All right.
I think it's a great initiative, so again, nothing to do with this, but just curious across the board, when individual departments or entities sign on to be partners, is there a process for that? What does that look like? If there's not, I think that's something we should probably address.
Thank you. Did you have anything else?
No, that's it.
Any questions or requests of councillors for a future town council meeting? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on again to discussions. Thanks, Paul, for the reminder on that one. To have it pretty broadly here, I do have as a discussion item, boards, committees, commissions, Vice President McGrath and I were speaking about this. Did you want to start us off with discussion here?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I've been trying to fill these for a year and a half now, so I figured maybe I could reach out to a younger generation. As far as I know, there's no age. It's just you have to be a Bridgewater resident. So the school, I don't know if it's true, but the school had said that the seniors don't have electives anymore, but because of the budget cuts, but study halls. So maybe our committees could come and address the seniors at the school and tell them about our different committees, boards, and try to get them on. Also, I know that BSU students are listed on our sensors, so I don't know if we could reach out to President Clark and see if any of his professors live in town or some of us, us students, because I'm, there's so many empty, I just, I don't know what else to do. So I figured it'd be a good way to get the younger generation involved in the local government, but in a fun way. And we can also reach out to Briscoe Aggie in the Plymouth Bristol and ask them if any of our students there would be interested, and maybe, you know, it could be part of their schooling, because I, unless someone else has an idea, I have no, we have too many empty.
Yeah, we were speaking, and the major reason why we brought this up is to effectively brainstorm briefly here at the council level, and then we could take it amongst ourselves beyond this meeting is how to do some outreach and recruitment for those boards, committees, and commissions. So these are some great ideas. Do any of the other councillors have ideas to how to do some outreach? Counselor, did you want to start?
A while ago, when Assistant Town Manager Kim Williams was here, there was an outreach effort made, but it was only once. So I think we should hopefully do that again within the town, subject to the town manager liking that idea, and maybe, I know Mary herself at last year's Autumn Fest had a booth and a table there and stuff like that. I think at different community events that we have, maybe we do some tables and do some outreach. I have a question through you to the town attorney. To be appointed to a board commissioner committee, do you have to be 18 years old?
I was actually looking up as, I didn't know this was coming up. I'm actually looking that up now, so if you want to continue your discussion, I can take a look. I believe it had something to do, though, with being a registered voter, and if it's tied to being a registered voter, obviously, there's an age requirement, but I don't want to, don't quote me on that, because I want to get it verbatim. So by all means, continue the conversation.
But Mary's idea is a good idea. When I was chair of the Cultural Council in Foxborough, Cultural Council is the only council you can not have to be a resident to be on, because they were short of people. But we brought in people that were close to 18, so we could get them involved and train them, and then as soon as they turned 18, we nabbed them for the Cultural Council, so we could do that.
All right. Counselor Strickles?
Thank you. I do think that the resident requirement and the registered voter in the town is a little bit of a problem, because we do have one specific resident that comes and is diligent and comes to almost every single meeting. He is not here this evening, but he's simply not a registered voter in this state, but he still resides here half the time with his parents. So for me, we're missing out on crucial voices that are actively engaged in our political process without really getting the credit for it. So I think reexamining who's eligible would potentially open up some doors for that. I also would agree that Mary's initiative at last year's Autumn Fest, it didn't fall on deaf ears. We at least were able to have solid conversations with people for a few hours and educate them. Maybe it's simply just adding a line item every single agenda of encouragement for people to apply and giving them the exact point person that they can speak to about it. Maybe it's not one of us. Maybe it's going directly to the town manager. Maybe it's going to anyone, just so that we know exactly who they need to be speaking with, and we're following up with that person to make sure that, A, people are reaching out, because if they are and they're not getting answered, that's a problem, and we need to address it. But ultimately, if people aren't, then we're stepping it up a notch, and maybe, just maybe, we're hitting somebody when they're paying attention and they want to actively engage. And I also think anytime we're around an election cycle, we really need to cap, capitalize on those that are super vocal at those moments, people that run, they might not get chosen, but encouraging them to then give back on boards, committees, and commissions is also huge. If someone raises their hand for elected office and they don't, and they don't win out in the end, they should still stay actively involved, and we should encourage that, so.
It was as I thought. It is a registered voter, part eligibility for service under the admin code, section I, unless otherwise defined within the administrative code, any registered voter of the town of Bridgewater except, and then there's some caveats to who can't, but it is a registered voter. So there would be an age limitation based on your ability to vote.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I think there might be some towns that take in students as like kind of ancillary board members and things like that. And I know that one of the people who worked for me in the office when I was here as town clerk started as, he was one of our high school students, went on to college, he's gone on to his PhD, he's, you know, working for government now. So I think if we can bring people in to a place where it's interesting to them and make room for them, it might not have to be exactly a board committee commission member, but sitting in on the meetings and hearing what's going on and then adding their input to it, whether their vote really counts or just their presence counts for them and for us. I think there are things like that that could, that could really happen and start to build a base for people who will be interested in participating in their town government over the long range. So I hope we can figure out some way to do that.
That's great.
On that point, I served as a student advisory council rep to the Brockton School Committee for three years representing my house, and we have student reps on the school committee. We've seen them speak at the different meetings. We didn't get to vote, but we were in an advisory capacity, and the student voice was heard that way. When the school committee was discussing policy and stuff like that, it could work the same for town government and for boards and commissions too.
Great, thank you. Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, just a quick note, the website does a great job laying out all the current boards, commissions, and committees that are, that have vacancies. It would just be nice on here if maybe the town manager could work to put a date on here that just says like last updated, because I don't know how accurate this is or how often it is updated. So maybe just a quick note underneath the nicely laid out table that says last updated with the date, just so folks know that this is accurate in terms of vacancies.
We'll tell you, I, I quickly chime in. That's one of the changes we made. We didn't have that on the website before, so now it is updated regularly. I work with Josh to make sure it's updated regularly. That's a small adjustment we can do. One other change that we've made is in the operational updates. I specifically have a boards, commissions, committees section of that update and it provides direct links to that website so people can see more information about it and can get directly in contact with Josh. So we're trying to do our effort our end to help support that as well, but we can do a last updated part to it.
Thank you.
Alright, anything further?
Yeah, no, great. I was going to certainly suggest more along the lines of the website, maybe with the new website development, we can have some, you know, on the homepage presence that gets your rights to boards, committees, and commissions. To Councilor Strickles' point, maybe going forward, at each meeting, we can bring up one particular committee and go over the vacancy of that particular committee. So at least residents in the audience here can hear about that particular committee and maybe someone's interested based on that conversation. And again, you know, I thought it was great that we tried to reach out to people during Autumn Fest last year. Again, maybe we'll strive to do that again this year. And I like the idea of trying to get some young students potentially through there, especially if they're going to be pre-law or working, looking towards studying government, their history-based class, civics classes, if they have that, maybe reaching out to those teachers and those particular classes to see if there's any interest in that regard. But all, you know, again, great ideas and hopefully, you know, we can find some more people to fill these spots.
Definitely. Councilor Strickles and Councilor Kenny?
Just to piggyback off of what Dr. Perry was just discussing about bringing it up every meeting, if the committee, board, or commission has a present chair, it may make all the sense in the world for a presentation of that said committee and literally make every single board, committee, and commission come in every single meeting. This one's the open space. This one's the cultural council. This one is our lovely MJ to talk about the finance committee. There's a lot of engagement that you can get from putting a face to a name of the person that someone's actively going to get to work with. So I do think sometimes the best messenger is the person that's already servicing that specific committee versus all of us who aren't in that capacity currently. So engaging the chairs and having them be part of the recruitment process would probably fill vacancies quicker as well.
Definitely.
Mr. President, I quickly want to try, you're absolutely correct. Josh and I have started discussing with some of our boards and commissions. We're working on putting a schedule together, having some of our boards and committees come before the council and do exactly that. Unless you know every meeting, that's not what we planned, but we've already begun that work. So Josh is working with our committee chairs and we'll probably, we'll put a plan together and we'll have it presented for you all to start bringing them in.
Great, and Sean?
There's some great ideas tonight, excuse me. One thing that we may need to consider or is letting people know what the time commitments are going to be, meeting schedules or expectations, so that people do know whether or not they can fit a committee into their daily schedule, monthly schedule. Having an unknown, especially on committees that aren't even filled right now, can be very difficult to sell to somebody who may want to be involved. And just to add to that, committees that don't have anyone on or are very limited, especially if someone wants to be involved but does not have experience on boards, that can be quite an uphill challenge if they don't have the time to learn Robert's rules, how meetings are operated. So I don't know if there's a guide or something we could point somebody to who may be interested or a packet to put together for expectations for committees, just approximates, just to give people numbers, because again, contact is great, but letting people know what the expectations are if they were to follow through, I think is really important considering how busy everyone is.
Alright, thank you. This is a great conversation. Hopefully we continue to have it. Thank you, Mary, for bringing this up. Anything further from councilors before we move on? Okay, great, thank you very much. Okay, next on committee reports. Councilor Murphy, did you want to do that now or will we have our items up for legislation?
I'll do it with the items, that's fine, yeah. We did have, I'll give a quick update. We did have a good conversation about the general ledger and worked with our finance department for the town, who provided us with really detailed reports on the current finances of the town and we kind of walked through them and had a chance to ask some good questions. So for folks that are looking to dive a little deeper, I would suggest you go back and watch that meeting. It was great, so appreciation to the town for providing that and allowing for that discussion.
Yeah, I'll echo that as well. Any other committee reports?
We, the rules and procedures met a couple weeks ago. We referred three items to the town council. And we have, we had discussed three items that the charter committee recommended, but we need more information before referring it to the town council.
Okay, I'm sure those will be coming up on an agenda soon then. Anything further, committee reports? Okay, thank you very much. Next on, we will move on to legislation for action. First up is Order OFY 26-014, a transfer order for the CPC, First Parish Unitarian Church Window Project. The Budget and Finance Committee met on, sorry, Budget and Finance rather, met on 9/16/25, and that was today. And then the finance committee met on 9/8 and they voted five to one to recommend, and I'll defer over to Councilor Murphy for our Budget and Finance update.
Yeah, Budget and Finance voted three zero to recommend.
Great, so I'll entertain a motion for approval and discussion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion from councilors on this item?
Thank you, Mr. President. My only discussion item would be, I noticed that in most of these orders that we have here, there was a one nay vote. I just didn't know if MJ could potentially give us some color on that as to what went on in the finance committee.
Sorry to interrupt. We had a little bit of a typo on our council clerks and on those. The only five to one was on this item and MJ, the other ones were six zero, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. President. One of them was, I believe, a one abstention on it. I don't believe it was actually, I know it was a five yay, one abstain. The member, if I remember correctly, the member had indicated they didn't feel comfortable voting for it. I let them have that choice and it was noted on the record, but the other ones were unanimous decision.
Okay, thank you. Alright, any further discussion from councilors on this one?
Just going to recuse myself from this vote.
Okay. Anything further?
Yes, if we need to say it ahead of time, I'm also recusing myself.
You should let them know or let the president know just a brief reason and then...
I'm a member of the church, even though...
Yikes.
I'm just a member of the church, member of the congregation, but just in case.
Okay, and then?
And I'm the wife of the Chair of the...
CPC.
Of the co-chair of the CPC, and I promised that I would always recuse myself.
Great. Everyone else, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. That'd be seven and two.
Seven and zero.
Next up, Order FY 26-018, acceptance of a donation from the Howard Foundation. The finance committee met on September 8th, and again, just to correct that, it was a six zero vote to recommend, and I'll defer to Councilor Murphy for Budget and Finance update.
Yeah, Budget and Finance had a good discussion around this item, and our finance department informed us that this money particularly goes towards programming for our seniors at the senior center here in Bridgewater. So it has a long history that dates back, I believe it was close to 10 years, and it's, you know, somewhere around that $10,000 mark, this time being $9,000. So Budget and Finance voted three zero to recommend.
Alright, thank you. I'll entertain a motion for approval and a second for discussion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion carries. Next we have Order FY 26-019, acceptance of donation to the Parks and Recreation Department from Mr. Ron Enos. The finance committee voted six zero to recommend at their September 8th meeting, and again, I'll defer to Councilor Murphy on this one as well for Budget and Finance.
Budget and Finance also talked a little bit about the acceptance of gifts, especially permanent structures, and our town manager spoke a little bit to this and hopefully in the future we'll develop a process that's clearly outlined for, I think, accepting gifts. I don't know if I'm saying anything that's right. And so I think the town wants to be able to accept gifts like this, ensure they align with the greater good of the town and that there's a way to maintain them and kind of keep them looking as good as they do. So needless to say, Budget and Finance recommended three zero.
Okay, great. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
There's a motion and a second, thank you. Any further discussion on this one? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next up, Order FY 26-020, acceptance of gift from Bridgewater State University. Finance committee met on 9/8 and voted six zero to recommend, and again, to Councilor Murphy for Budget and Finance.
Yeah, nothing more to add. We had a great presentation by President Clark last week on Budget and Finance. We talked a little bit more about that and dove into our thankfulness for them to donate this type of money and hopefully that continues going forward. So we voted three zero to recommend.
Great, do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
We have a motion and do I have a second?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on this item? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Alright, we do not have any old business. We will now move on to new business. Order FY 26-021, this is an order to request the legislation to allow an additional all alcohol beverages package store license for 233 Broad Street. I'll ask one of the councilors who sponsored this, this is Councilor Murphy, Councilor McGrath, and Councilor Strickles for a little explanation, and then we're just looking for a motion to retain this at the council level if that is the will of the council. Anyone want to take the lead on this one?
I'm happy to take the lead. This is for an all alcohol license. It's the store that's currently located inside the Roach Brothers down on Broad Street here. The group is applying for that all alcohol license and we're sponsoring. I think it's good for business. And it's the Cotac, am I saying that correct? Cotac Group LLC that is doing the application process. They've also received, I think, numerous letters of support that were shared with the council and a petition, I think, with close to a few hundred signatures on it. Six hundred signatures on it in support of this as well too, so happy to sponsor and push it forward.
Great.
Thank you. I also think making sure that we are pouring into an existing business is very important in these changing economic times, especially given this business is in our only grocery store in town. If we don't, we are putting them, in my opinion, at a disadvantage with those that are, whether they're up the street or not, if someone wants the matter of convenience, they're going to shop with them while they're doing their grocery shopping. So I find this to be a very easy thing to not only support, but to approve as a council for the simple fact that we have one grocery store in town and we are adding to the convenience not only of our residents, but we're feeding a business that already gives back to the community in great ways. So that's why I greatly would encourage the council to keep it at a council level, but to also support it.
Great, and do I, okay.
I encourage businesses to grow. I think it's a great idea and it gives a lot of foot traffic for Roach Brothers, which supports our schools and all different committees in town. So I'm glad to see them look forward and think of ways to grow, so I'm definitely for this.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to keep this at the council level?
Motion.
Motion?
Second.
Thank you, multiple seconds. Any discussion on this one? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next, we have Order FY 26-022, Bridgewater DPW Union. I'm going to try this acronym that we used earlier, AFSMI, Local 1700 Collective Bargaining Contract Ratification. I will defer to our town manager to introduce this one.
Yes. In the council's agenda, there's appropriated two orders associated with the collective bargaining agreements. The first one is the ratification of the agreement, the MOA with AFSMI, which is our DPW union. And then there's the appropriation of funds for it. High level, I'll just give a quick summary of the DPW contract at our, you know, next meeting for FinCom as well as the Budget and Finance. We'll provide this summary in written form and including the packet, but I'll verbally give it. The DPW's contract expired June 30th of this past year, so this agreement is a three-year contract from fiscal year '26 to fiscal year '28. For this fiscal year, it's a 1% COLA, a 1-1 in the following year, and a 1.5% in fiscal year '28. We made some changes in our vacation policy to limit the amount of vacation time that can be rolled over. We made adjustments in the stipends associated for licenses within, you know, General Fund, Water and Sewer Fund, and there are 29 AFSMI members in the AFSMI union. That's my synopsis of this. I know we'll go further when it comes back before the council.
Thank you. So I'm looking for a vote, rather, a motion to refer to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committee?
So moved.
Motion, and then do I have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion on this one?
I have one. I just want to bring this out, the understanding between the town of Bridgewater and the DPW, under wages, the town and the union have met and agreed to implement lower than previous offered COLA increase in order to avoid a reduction in force, a reduction in hours for current bargaining unit members as a result of the budgetary deficit. So I thank the town manager and the DPW for, you know, bringing the lower down and helping us with our budget and we don't have to lose any more employees, so I commend both parties.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, motion carries. Next up, we have Order FY 26-023, Bridgewater DPW Union, AFSMI Local 1700. This is the collective contract appropriation transfer, and again, this is tied to the previous one. Anything further to add from our town manager? Nope? So I'll be entertaining a motion again to refer to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee?
So moved.
A motion and a second, thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. Okay, next up, Order FY 26-024, Bridgewater Public Library Staff Association Collective Bargaining Contract Ratification, and I'll ask our town manager to introduce this one.
Yep, I'll give a brief summary as well for this one. The library contract expired the year preceding, so there is a little difference, and if you look at the appropriation order that you consider, next, there's a transfer from the stabilization fund to fund these contracts. These funds, we did budget for them appropriately. But a brief summary of where we are with these is 2% for fiscal year '25, a 1% for this year, and a 1-1, as I mentioned, for the next year, which effectively is 1.5%. We made a change to our 10-year longevity payment of adding $500. We made an adjustment in the healthcare split between town and new employees, starting after the ratification of this, so transitioned from an 80-20% split to a 75-25% split. And we also made another, that reduction in the vacation carryover. That's the summary of this collective bargaining agreement, and there's nine members in this union as well.
Great, thank you. So I'm looking for a motion to refer to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committee?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion on this one? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, Order FY 26-025, Bridgewater Public Library Staff Association Collective Contract, and this is the appropriation transfer, which is tied to the previous one that our town manager just introduced. So I'll be looking for a motion to refer to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee?
Moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this one? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, we have Ordinance D, FY 26-005, Proposed Zoning Ordinance Amendment, Senior Village Housing Development. I will ask Councilor Hunt to introduce this for us.
Yes, this is, I think you have it there in your packets. It's the basic purpose is to ensure that there is sufficient area for residents in this, in this new development that's adequate for passive recreation. And if you look at some other things, sometimes we've lost the passive recreation part by having water retention kept in that open area, so there's no actual entertainment area for people if they want to have, I don't know, outdoor things for the residents. So this is just to ensure that we keep space enough for residents. We have, we can have water retention too, but we have space enough for residents to have outdoor activities as well.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, can we get a motion to refer to Planning Board and CED Committee and have a discussion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and discussion, Councilor Ellenberg?
Can you tell us where this development might be?
My eyes are really big. I have contacts and they do different things now, so...
Is this for a particular development or is this...
It's residential D.
Yes, yes. Thank you, thank you very much.
Just anything that's on residential D.
Yes, do you know where? Because there are many places voted residential D.
Right, I'd say, but it's not for one particular type of situation.
It would be overarching, it would be overarching for anything that's residential D.
I understand it's overarching, but merrily, you said that there is a particular... I understand it's overarching, but Merrily, you said that there is a particular development in mind?
There has been something else that was created that had just the water there. I'm wanting to make sure that that doesn't happen again.
Okay.
Council Strickles.
I think to Councilor Ellenberg's point, I think she's wanting to know and identify what this is clearly amending. And you and I had conversations with the individual, the resident, that brought this to our attention. This is an amendment to an existing ordinance for the senior housing village. So I think that's the clarity that you may want. And it's definitely pertaining to that to make sure that we retain that forty percent so that we get that open space in that community and it's not so congested where it's just the twenty. It's more in line and more uniform with what our typical open space and preservation is. For some reason, it ended up lower than that.
I didn't understand this, so I went to Shane in planning. And he said the reason why he only had twenty percent is because in this district where they're building, he's going to, they're going to have sidewalks to connect to like the park, I think it's Summer Street, and different sidewalks. So they're going to have more walking ability than the other ones. So they're still going to have their open space with twenty percent. But they don't need the forty because they're going to have more walking spaces to parks and he's connecting sidewalks to the downtown and stuff like that. And that's why he brought it down to twenty.
I would still say that if they leave it at twenty and that becomes where the water goes, then they don't have any. They have sidewalks.
I was speaking with Shane. He said that they would have that area. So if it was a water area, I think he would have said, well, he would have mentioned to me. So I did ask him about it the other day.
Did you mention to him that that has happened before?
I don't think I have to mention to Shane because he's the planning and he's the one that developed this and worked on this very hardly. So I asked him, did, will they still have space in the twenty percent to do stuff? And he said, yes. And the only reason is because they have recreation and they can walk other places and he's going to make sure the sidewalks connect. That's my answer.
Sidewalks don't make recreation room though.
No, he was making sidewalks because in this area, they're going to be able to walk to parks and stuff where the other districts, they don't have that ability to do it. But this isn't like in the downtown, so they will have the ability to get out, to go to the Summer Street Park and stuff like that.
Dr. Perry has a comment.
Yeah, I'll just also add that again, in residential D, as mentioned, it's closer mostly to the downtown business district. The size of the properties there aren't as big as ones in residential A, B, and C. So that's another reason why they might have made a twenty percent situation here in residential D. But again, this is going to, you know, Planning Board and CED to discuss. So I think they can vet it on out and certainly send back a recommendation whether they think forty percent is allowable or if it's going to be too much and restrictive, you know, based on the size of the properties in residential D. So, but I think again, it still should be pushed forward and let them vet that out for us.
Yeah, I agree. We should have those, our CED Committee vet that out and our Planning Board and see what they, what feedback you all have. Do we have any further discussion on this one? Okay, all those in favor of referring to Planning Board and CED Committee, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Motion carries. All right, next we will move on to citizen comments. Due to Massachusetts Open Meeting Law requirements, discussions will not take place during public comment periods. If appropriate, responses to questions and concerns will be given by the town manager at a future town council meeting. Anyone may comment at this time for up to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Jan and Hanson, Pleasant Street. As far as the alcohol license, now that I hear what's going on, if it was in the order, I wouldn't have some of those questions the way it was worded. It sounded like you're doing a whole new all alcohol package store. I didn't realize it was the one inside Roach Brothers that's been in Roach Brothers. So haven't they had a license right along? But if that's the place that you're talking about, that's nothing new. It's been there right along. So I don't understand the order, so it wasn't very clear. So I just want to make that FYI, maybe it should have been clearer. And as far as Hale Street, the only thing I can picture is that these apartments getting put in, what's going to stop college students from getting it? I don't really see how Governor Healy thinks that's necessarily going to solve housing problems. It's just going to, you know, college students might end up filling it, just to comment. And as far as committees and commissions, Council Kennedy beat me to it because citizen comments at the end. But I do feel that on the website, besides a description of what each committee is, have what the time involved, what is, you know, okay, they meet once a month or they meet, you know, on Tuesdays or whatever, but what's in between? Because it's just, they just don't show up for the meeting. They do things in between. So I was thinking about a committee, I'm not going to say what it is, but I would like to know what's involved in between these meetings. That should be on the job description. I'm going to use the word job. But that should be what's on the description on the website. This is what this committee does, but what's involved in between meetings? You know, what's your time committing, commitment? And that could decide, well, yeah, maybe I shouldn't, you know, try out for this. And I didn't know who to ask. And a couple of people that I did ask really didn't give me any information. So I think that's a good idea to have it on the website, along with what exactly that committee is. So I was going to mention that and that would be very helpful because there's a couple I'm toying with, but, you know, I don't know what the time constraint is and I don't want to commit to something and not be able to have a quorum. I was, Historical Commission was having a meeting tonight. They didn't have a quorum. We waited over fifteen minutes and then they finally said, we can't do it. So they postponed it. So, and they did say they need somebody for that committee, by the way. So I just wanted to mention those two things and thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come up and speak? Okay, seeing none, we will move on. Thank you very much. Okay, now we will move on to council comments. I'll start with Council Lindy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good meeting. I just wanted to let folks know because we won't have another meeting between now and then. Saturday, the twenty-seventh, the same day as Autumn Fest at BSU. The Friends of Library are doing a book sale from ten to one. It's a great opportunity for parents of children and adults to get reading materials for either a buck a book, paperbacks are two for a buck, and then you can fill a bag for ten. So come on down. If you want to donate books, they're still taking donations because the sales have been brisk over the summer. And all those programs go to support library programs that the library can't pay for out of town budget funds. There will be, I'll announce for October, there's a Francis Perkins, who was the first female Cabinet Secretary in the United States. Both East Bridgewater and Bridgewater are cooperating jointly. Part one is, I forget whether part one's here or part one's in East Bridgewater or part two's here, but it's a limited space and it's, again, the first female Cabinet Secretary, very interesting woman in history. And that's it for me.
Thank you very much. Councilor Hunt.
Yes. It sounded really loud. On the twenty-seventh, which is at Autumn Fest, I have purchased a table that, to use for a few things. And one of them is that later in October, we're going to be sponsoring a walk here in Bridgewater for Family and Community Resources in Brockton. Usually they do their walk in Brockton. But they came to Bridgewater for something else that was happening and they got really impressed with Bridgewater and said, let's do our walk down here this year. So it's going to take place starting at the middle school, walk around through town. And so we'll be giving out some literature for that to include people to come for that, Supporting Family and Community Resources. It's one of the many organizations that support our citizens. For, this would be for usually sexual and domestic violence and for care for children in violent homes or in homes where they need some protection from a parent, that sort of thing. It's a fabulous organization that's been going on for years. And years and years ago, years and years ago, like in the early two thousands, Bridgewater used to always give money every year to various programs throughout the area that provided services for all the towns in the county. And then we stopped doing that about in two thousand eight. So I thought this was maybe a way for Bridgewater to help support this organization, to do their walk here this year and support them. So anybody who wants to walk, you can get some shirts or something and do the walk. I think it costs ten dollars a person to just do the walk and then they're going to be doing all sorts of entertainment and everything. And if you have anything that you do and you like to sell things that you make, they'll have places for that on the lawn of the middle school. So we'll be advertising that at the Autumn Fest and also asking for any money for lights downtown if people want to make donations. And so if you have anything that you want to do, come to that place and you can do your stuff there too. It's just a table.
Great, thank you. Council Murphy.
Just a couple of quick thank yous for me. First to our Finance Director for the town. She's been an incredible partner and asset to us in the Budget and Finance Committee. So I just wanted to publicly thank her. And every time I send her an email, she gets back to me so fast and with such a detailed explanation. So just really thankful for your partnership. And I think we're a lucky town to have you here too. And I know you've been a great partner to our new town manager as well. So public thank you to you and then another thank you to Lisa and Al for stepping up to taking on the challenge of keeping our downtown looking great during the winter months. So hopefully we can help push that initiative as they kind of develop their plans on how to donate. And I know Councilor Hunt just mentioned one opportunity, but the more we can do for them, the better. And I think that's it for me.
Great, thank you. Dr. Perry.
Thank you, echoing Council Murphy's sentiments on our town staff. They've done a great job. And to Al and Lisa, just to let them know, I'm the Chair of the Lions Christmas Committee still of decorations. So I'll be happy to get in touch with you guys and work together on making the common look great again this holiday season. Also, obviously, just in reference to Autumn Fest, just want to remind everyone that it is Saturday, September twenty-seventh from ten to four. Also that morning, there's the Police Five K. That's been going on for a number of years right now. So if you like to run Five K, please sign up for that race. It's always a great turnout every year. And I don't want to steal our president's probably mentioning of the car show coming up this weekend for Fire Effect, but looking forward to attending that with my car. So I'll be there Sunday, the twenty-first, from two to six. I also want to thank President Clark. He invited the council to come to the BSU football game, their first home football game this past weekend, and I attended on the council's behalf. And they were very gracious, wonderful snacks and tailgating going on in the president's tent. But, and BSU did win. So again, I wanted to thank President Clark for the invitation. And they did a great job and had a great time. So that's all I got. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Council Strickles.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone who came out tonight and shared during public comment. Thank you to my fellow councilors. I think we had a productive conversation regarding boards, committees, and commissions. Hopefully those conversations turn into action and we see some tangible change that will only benefit our town long term. I also wanted to echo the sentiments for Lisa, Al, and Jeff. I don't think, I sometimes think we take them for granted in this town when someone raises their hand consistently. And all of these people are very busy people outside of this. For, I mean, Lisa deals with preschoolers every day. So in and of itself, she's a saint. But then she takes on the work of the town at every single turn. She never takes a break. So for me, we need to ensure that we're never taking these people, we're never taking BTV for granted, we're never taking Fire for Effect for granted, we're never taking Lisa for granted, we're never taking anyone for granted in this town. Because when people raise their hand, we need to pour into them tenfold. So I really just want to publicly thank them and encourage others to join them because their love for the town shows tenfold every single time they raise their hand. So thank you all.
Thank you. Council Ellenberg.
I think everyone has been very well spoken with their thank you, so I will pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Kennedy.
She's right. Everyone's done a great job. I just want to thank the public again for coming out. I want to thank my councilors for a great discussions tonight that were very productive. I also want to thank Al and Lisa specifically, and I just want to let the public know that all it takes to get involved in those things is just putting your name out there and asking. The skill set can be developed if you are helping out those organizations because they're not going to be around forever, won't have the time commitments forever. So I just want to point that out, that really anybody can do it if you want to put the work in and they're a great assets to the town. So thank you guys.
Thank you. Vice President McGrath.
Thank you, Mr. President. We just signed that City of Peace. And if you read the Bridgewater Residents' Comments on Facebook, because a group of residents are honoring the life of Charlie Kirk, they're not peaceful, but hateful and mean. I've accepted Jesus Christ as my Lord and Savior and I do listen to Charlie. And the quotes that are on Facebook are taken out of context. He's not hateful at all. And I hope people would listen to themselves to Charlie and allow this group to peacefully honor his life tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you.
One of the negatives about going last is everybody takes all the good comments. So I'm particularly upset that Dr. Perry mentioned all the events, but but just to throw that out there a second time, yeah, car show this weekend. What are you bringing for a car?
I have a Mustang.
Oh, awesome. I'm looking forward to see that. I hope to attend with my family this weekend, the Police Five K. Next Saturday and Autumn Fest, I'm trying to convince my wife to do the Five K with me and our infant daughter. We'll probably just walk, but we hope to participate and be there. And again, thank you for all of the residents coming out for your comments. It's a little early to mention this, but we, my wife and I do plan doing something really fun for Halloween at the end of October. We live at the end of Black Mallard Road. It's a little creepy, maybe a little haunted. There's some, you know, stories about Bridgewater Triangle and all of this stuff. So if anybody wants to help us plan a pretty cool event, please reach out to me directly and I'll post some more details. Looking for volunteers to hide in the woods and maybe scare some children that are going to walk down the road. We did something pretty small last year and now that I have this platform, hopefully make it even bigger and more fun. And it is going to be a Friday night, so it could be fun. I look forward to sharing some more, but just want to throw it out there. With that being said, I'll ask for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
And we have a second. And all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.